All right, is everybody, is everybody good? All right, we're gonna get started. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular meeting of the School Committee of the Town of Foxborough. It's January 6th, 2020. Happy New Year, everyone. And we're gonna get started with our open public comment period. Is there anyone here who would like to speak at the open public comment period? Come on up to the table, guys. You can all bring chairs.
You can bring chairs, yes.
Just state your name.
I'm Dimitri Davis, I'm a senior.
Kyle Abashon, I'm also a senior.
Jackson Sylvester, I am also a senior.
And Ryan Prue, and I'm also a senior.
Welcome.
So, we just wanted to talk about mainly the budgetary portion of the meeting. We heard that you were, that the committee was thinking about cutting a math teacher next year, and we just wanted to express our opinions on cutting math teachers. We think that math is a very important subject, and it's not lecture-based. Mrs. Mella, I believe that you're involved in the math department at the Ahern, and I know that you all know the importance of having one-on-one teaching with your students, especially in math, where each student learns mathematics a different way. Each teacher is required to stay after school at least one or two days a week. Most of the math teachers stay after three or four days a week, and if you cut a teacher, you're losing three or four days of one-on-one help, where students who need attention stay after school. And I think that's a really important period for students to learn one-on-one. And all the math teachers are extremely experienced, and they're great teachers, and I just don't think that it would be a good idea to cut a math teacher. And all of us have experience with staying after with teachers. We do bad on a quiz or a test, and we want to improve our grades, and we stay after, and they'll help you so much, and you do so much better on the next test. And I think it's fantastic that the teachers are that dedicated, and I think that they're all great teachers.
Adding on to what Dimitri said, a personal experience of mine was I did poorly on a quiz, and my math teacher this year, Mrs. Carlson, actually stayed after me about two or three times. And as soon as I stayed after with her two or three times, on the next quiz, I actually got 100% on it. So it shows that all the math teachers actually work really hard and make sure their students succeed.
I think throughout middle school and high school, I don't know if I've had a bad math teacher. I think they're all, they all really love what they do, and they all really, I guess, like teaching us, and I like learning from them. And, you know, it's a big thing to, like, to have a good teacher really makes the experience of the class and really makes you want to learn. And I think having, having the teachers I've had, it's made math definitely my favorite subject, and I want to be there every day learning, and they definitely are a huge part of that.
And in addition to that, I know that you guys look at the stats a lot. You analyze those every year, and Foxborough consistently has a very high math MCAS score, and I think that's due to the student-to-teacher ratio, which is kept low for a reason. And I think that low ratio is very important when it comes to the math department. And I think we should keep that ratio low so that we can continue striving for excellence in math and keeping that math MCAS score high, and keeping our math SAT scores high, and keeping students getting into the good colleges, because the student-to-teacher ratio has a dramatic impact on that, and the research shows. And we just wanted to point that out, and we hope that you consider our comments when the budgetary portion comes.
Jackson, did you?
Yeah, just one more thing. I was gonna say that I've been in a couple math classes where there's just so many people in there, and it's just, I kind of struggle, because math isn't like one of my best subjects, but especially like in classes when it's like overloaded with people, it's hard to get, it's hard for just one teacher to just travel out and, and like, just get everyone's questions and everything. And with the after-school, it's definitely helped me over the years, and I don't know what I would do without, like, that extra help at after-school and that one-on-one time.
Jackson, when you say overloaded, how many kids are you talking about? Approximately, in your opinion?
I'd say like, I think freshman year, we had like high twenties, like 27, 28, which is like, it's like the average class size, but it was still tough for just one teacher to get around to everyone.
And sometimes that happens because, I mean, the guidance tries to keep the class sizes low, but sometimes kids switch around in classes, and one class might get overloaded with kids, which is obviously an accident. But if you cut a teacher, that's increasing the chances that that's gonna happen. So, yeah. Yep, that's all.
Anything else, guys?
Thank you.
Well, as you know, we're gonna talk about the budget around 8:00. So you can tune in at home, or you can, you're welcome to stay, and we'll certainly take your comments, you know, under consideration. Appreciate you coming forward and talking to the committee. Does anyone have any questions for these young men?
Sure. I mean, this is just anecdotal, but if you were to reflect back on your time at Foxborough High School and had to estimate, I know, it's just an estimate, like, what kind of the sizes are we seeing in your math courses?
I know personally, past few years, I think I've had almost every single class has been 20 or over.
Okay.
Yeah. It definitely depends on the level of math that you're in. Me and, me and Ryan are both in AP Calculus, and those classes tend to have a small number of students. But if you go down, if you get to the honors level and the CP level, those classes tend to have a lot more students, because there's more students taking courses. Yeah, and that also has an impact, because if you have a class of AP Calculus and there's only eight kids in the class, then you're gonna have a dramatically higher number of kids taking lower-level classes, and you need more teachers to handle that.
And in your experience, from your, from your viewpoint, what, when does it start to feel crowded in a math class to you? You may have different answers, and that's fine, different people.
I'd say a lot of times, I remember personally my sophomore year, I think we had, I don't wanna, I think it was about 22, and oftentimes I felt that I was, like, the teacher wasn't getting to me as often as I think I would, I would need, because I struggle in math a lot of times, so I would stay after a lot. And I think if, say, that teacher wasn't even there, then the class size would be even bigger, and then I wouldn't even, I would have to stay after almost every day.
I agree with that. Like, 20, 22, it kind of feels crowded. 22, 23. And I've had a couple that are, that have been like that.
Also, as you increase in the level of the math classes, I think you can get lower than 22, and it'll start to feel crowded, especially in a top math class, where you're learning incredibly hard material. Everybody in the math class struggles at some point throughout the year, no matter how good at math you are, and you need the one-on-one attention. And so even a class that has 16 kids in it, if you're in a hard math class, can feel really crowded at some points.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. We appreciate it. Congratulations on senior year.
Thank you.
Okay? Thanks for coming. Can you leave one chair up there? Thank you. All right. Good evening. Yep, it's always nice to hear student voices. Absolutely, especially our student reps aren't here tonight, so.
I'm using ratios and context.
Warms the cockles of your math heart. All right, we're moving on to approval of minutes. We have three different sets of minutes tonight. The first set is the December 16th regular meeting minutes. Thank you. Does anyone have any comments or changes? I actually had one thing, Janet. On page three, under other matters, where the paragraph where it says Ms. Bellinger congratulated seniors, it says she attended last week's athletic night, and it should, I think it should say, "which included a very informative," because there, it was the same, and it was the social host liability, I would say, presentation from the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office, because it was the same thing. It sounds a little bit like I went to two different things.
All right, so you wanted to read it. Week's athletic night.
Last week's athletic night, "which included a very informative, social host liability presentation through the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office," if you don't mind.
We could edit it to make it sound like you went to more things.
But that wouldn't be correct.
I know, but when I read that, I was, I thought I missed one of those two things.
Nice catch.
I knew you went to the athletic night, because we had talked about it.
It was the same night.
And I thought it was.
So it was the same event, so I wanted to make sure we clarified that. We do actually read the minutes before we approve them, so, thank you. That was my only change.
That makes sense.
If no one has any other changes, could we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of December 16th as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? 5-0-0. Thank you. Next up, we have the December 18th subcommittee, policy subcommittee meeting minutes. And thank you for meeting over Christmas. Mr. Pearson and Mr. Ruder. They look good to me.
I'll move to accept your exceptional minutes as presented.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? 5-0-0, and thanks again to the policy subcommittee. We're gonna be discussing the fruits of your labor later on this evening. And then, our budget subcommittee has also been busy, the December 20th, 2019 minutes from the budget subcommittee meeting. And they all sort of look good to me. Does anyone on the budget subcommittee have any changes, questions? All right.
So I make a motion to accept the minutes from the December 20th, 2019 budget subcommittee meeting. Brenton?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? 5-0-0. Thank you. And thank you for squeezing that in before the Christmas holiday. Appreciate that.
All right, so, next up is our teaching and learning highlight with the Burrow Elementary School Grade 2 teachers and students for responsive classroom. Come on up to our table.
Speak all night.
You never know.
I know. Ella, why don't you sit here? You sit in the middle, okay?
Wow, that's in center, space of honor.
So we thought, yes, I'm sorry, we apologize, we thought we would have the other teachers and a few more students, but we do have Mrs. Pasetti, who teaches second grade at the Burrow, and Ella Wallant here with me to represent the, the student population at the Burrow School tonight. So I think you're aware that we replaced our Tier 1 social-emotional program from caring school community to responsive classroom. So responsive classroom, if you're not sure, is a social-emotional learning program. It's focused on engaging academics, positive community, and developing social awareness. So this summer, or I shouldn't say, the summer 2019, half of the elementary staff took the four-day responsive classroom course, and we learned strategies to create safe, engaging learning communities. And the goal is for this upcoming summer, 2020, for the, the other half of the elementary classrooms, teachers to take the course. So in the meantime, though, back in August, all of the K-4 classroom teachers had some training on one of the main components of, of the responsive classroom, and that's morning meeting. So that's what Mrs. Pasetti and Ella are here to explain a little bit more about morning meetings, so.
Awesome. And it's nice, because it's a very consistent program, but it's very personal, too, because each teacher and each classroom has different members. So you can tailor it to academics or to social, and there are really four components. You can do them all together in any order, where sometimes you might start with a few in the day, and then maybe I go to Spanish and come back and finish up some of them in a little bit. So it's flexible and fits into everybody's schedules, too. It starts with a greeting, and then there's a sharing, an activity, and a morning message, and those four components make up morning meeting. So you usually start with the greeting, and it's a really nice way to include everybody. It sets a positive tone for the day, it makes sure that everybody's recognized, and especially at the beginning of the year, you learn everybody's names, right? And you really talk to people that you might not always talk to when you go to lunch and things like that. So with the three of us, we have this big group here, and there's lots of different greetings, and the kids sometimes will ask, can we do favorite ones, like snowball toss and things like that? But rather than bring in snowballs today, I just have another little ball. So you would sit in a circle or stand in a circle, and there's no set seating, and you would just look and you would say, Ella, and you'd give a ball toss to Ella, and I'd say, "Good morning, Ella."
Good morning, Mrs. Pasetti.
And then she would turn. Don't hit me. Ready?
Good morning, Mrs. McCarthy.
Good morning, Ella. Good morning, Mrs. Pasetti. Good morning, Mrs. McCarthy. But you would have the 20, 22 students, and it's just really nice, and you can do knock-knock jokes, or lots of different greetings. Sometimes it's a fist bump or a microwave, and lots of different ways to start the day in a positive self-tone. And you're practicing social skills and hospitality. You like the microwave.
We like this.
Yeah. So there's lots of different ones on there, too. And after that, there's a share, and what's nice is the share is flexible. Sometimes you might just have two or three students share something personal, an anecdote from their life, something special that happened to them. Sometimes we partner share, and we come up with a topic, and we'll say, okay, you're gonna turn to a partner and share with them, and sometimes you share with everyone around the circle. That usually is something a lot quicker, so there's only three of us, thought there'd be more. But we're gonna just share something as simple as, what's your favorite color? So you get to learn about each other and talk about why. So I would start, and if anybody's ever been to my classroom, you know my favorite color is green, and I just find it a very happy color. It's full of life and full of excitement. What's your favorite color?
Pink.
Why do you like pink?
Because it makes me think of pink roses.
Oh. Pink, pink what?
Roses. Pink roses.
Roses, yes. They're very pretty.
Excellent. Do you have a favorite color?
My favorite color is green, too, just like Mrs. Pasetti, so.
Excellent. Excellent. So they're developing empathy for each other, developing communication skills, you're looking at eye contact, and we're working on listening skills. Sometimes I might say, Ella, what did Mrs. McCarthy say was her favorite color at the end? Just trying to get them to know that.
Do you remember?
Green.
All right. And then, this is gonna be very silly with just a few people. Your activity can be academic-based, and there's lots of fun ways to incorporate that, but I thought we would just do a fun one today called a roostersha.
Oh, no, she's not gonna make me do that.
And so this is one where you're standing up.
All right.
And feel free if you guys want to join in, because, you know, it's that movement break. Join us, join in, but you would make a circle. And first, you'd just start singing a roostersha, which is a very silly word, right? Do you remember this one?
Yeah.
So you'd go, a roostersha, a roostersha, a roostersha, sha. A roostersha, a roostersha, a roostersha, sha. Thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
A roostersha, a roostersha, a roostersha, sha. A roostersha, a roostersha, a roostersha, sha. Thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
Elbows back?
Elbows back.
A roostersha, a roostersha, a roostersha, sha. A roostersha, a roostersha, a roostersha, sha. We'll just do one more. Thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
Elbows back?
Elbows back.
Tongue out?
Tongue out.
There's usually a few more versions, but it's just fun, and you start off. And so you're building community there in a lot of different ways. And then the last part, which leads us into the academics of the days, is a morning message. And what's great is you're building community through shared reading, reinforcing language skills, heightening the excitement for the day, sort of talking about any changes in your schedule, and you're easing into any transitions. So the one for tonight, I had you as an audience rather than the classroom. So Ella, do you want to read it with me?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you see it up there? It's a little crooked. Here we go. January 6th, 2020. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. We hope you enjoyed your holiday break. Thank you for coming to tonight's meeting. We are excited to share a sample morning meeting with you. Do you have a favorite color? Why do you, what do you like about that color? Sincerely, the second-grade teachers. And then you might have a few people share about that, too. Like, today, we talked about spirit days coming up on Friday, or a program that's coming in this week, so.
I just want to point out one thing, too, that Ella is in Mrs. Light's class. She's not even in Mrs. Pasetti's class, so you can see the consistency. She knew all the things that, that we do. It's very consistent, and so, again, from kindergarten up, the students have those routines right away, so.
Well, you're a very brave young lady to go out with two unknown women to appear in front of the school committee. You did very well. You were more nervous than she.
I know, I'm, you know, come on.
Well, and there's cameras here, too, so then there's evidence of the roostersha.
You can hold this against me.
Excellent. So thank you for.
Oh, great job. Thank you for demonstrating. We really appreciate it.
Yes, that's great. Thank you, and happy new year.
Thank you for taking the time, Ray. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ella.
Thank you very much, Ella. Great job.
Ella, thank you for being here. Great. She was, that was really her duty.
Awesome.
I have two things to add, if that's okay.
Yes, please do.
One, all of our educational assistants were also trained to participate in the morning meeting.
Fantastic.
And our morning meetings happen in all three of our elementary buildings every morning at the same time. So this morning, I was doing instructional rounds with the elementary principals and the curriculum directors, and we were able to visit morning meeting at the IGO school and move amongst the first-grade classrooms, and we got to see basically the same routine. We also saw it in fourth grade, and it's just, it's great. Anybody who comes in can join the circle if they choose to join the circle, and it is a wonderful way to build community. So thank you for showing us what you do.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was awesome, really.
It really does build that joyful, engaging classroom, and it's such a wonderful way to start the day.
It seems that way. I, I would like to start my day like this.
You have puppies to play with. You do start your day like that.
They rarely talk to me.
There's that.
But that's, that's really important, because.
No, it's, it is.
We're putting our efforts there as a, as a school community.
Yes.
To set the day upright, to set the positioning of our kids with our teachers, to put everyone in the right aspect to learn. And so it's almost like, sometimes it's an unmeasurable, but it's incredibly valuable.
They're connecting with each other.
Yeah, building mutual respect for each other, too. I'm sorry.
But also, too, we talk about the soft skills.
Yeah.
Really reinforcing all of those.
Exactly, exactly.
Brent?
Just, I love that that's across the elementary, so I'm just curious, from administration's perspective, are there other aspects of responsive classroom that you're looking at on the horizon or interested in just learning more about?
The teachers who were fully trained over the summer are, have rolled out the full program, not just morning meeting.
Nice.
But because only half, responsive classroom has very strict parameters around class size, so once we maxed out our number of seats, the people who hadn't signed up this summer will be taking, last summer will be taking it this summer. And then we will have the full program rollout across all spectrums of the responsive classroom model. But because we wanted to do a district-wide rollout this year, we wanted to have the one thing that ties it all together be morning meeting, so that everybody can have the language. Yeah.
Nice, nice.
It's great. People love it. Hear about it all the time. They said it's made a tremendous difference.
We'll look forward to seeing more to come.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Anything else about responsive classroom before we move on to the exciting first reading of policy EEA, student transportation?
I guess, I guess I'll start off, if you don't mind. So first of all, I just wanted to thank Brent for your time working on this with, with Together.
Awesome.
And as we read this to you tonight, one of the, one of the visions we put together in this policy was to start off with why we do it, like an eligibility and what our base practices are as a district.
Yeah.
And, and we moved things around, from the old policy and some policies that we read from other school districts, to put it together with a little bit of vision, and then some of the few nuts and bolts things that follow that in the policy. Instead of putting one before the other, we thought this was a great way to kick it off the policy, to talk about, here's who we are, and here's our safe school practice, especially for our youngest students.
I agree.
And then kind of flowing to there what expectations we have for the people that ride the bus, and then kind of go into the administrative. So that's kind of the vision we put together in this policy that we're gonna read for you today.
It definitely shows that the two of you put a lot of thought into it, and the reorganization of the sections makes perfect sense to me.
Yeah, that's kind of where we were going with it. So we'll go for it, right? Sound good?
Yeah.
Sounds great.
I'll start off, and you can pick up reading whenever you wish.
Sure.
It is a long one.
Section by section.
Sure. Student transportation, file number of policy EEA. It is the intent of the Foxborough School Committee to comply with the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the regulations of the Registry of Motor Vehicles, and the Department of Education pertinent to transportation of students. Those laws and regulations govern any area not covered by specific declarations of policy, and they shall supersede this policy in the event of conflict. I'll do the first one. Eligibility. All kindergarten students, all students in grades 1 through 12 who live more than one mile from the school sign will be entitled to transportation privileges.
Cool. Safe schools practice. Kindergarten students will not be dropped off at the designated bus stop unless there is a caregiver to receive the student. If no caregiver is present, then the child will be returned to the child's school, and the parent slash guardian will be responsible to pick up the child. Kindergarten students during the first week of school wear bus name tags to and from school. Bus drivers will check for the bus name tags and compare to route sheets. Parents are prohibited from boarding school buses. The Foxborough Public School District uses security cameras on school buses to ensure the safety of students. They may be used in any area inside and surrounding the bus where there is no reasonable expectation of privacy. Students identified on security cameras in violation of the school district policies will be subject to appropriate disciplinary action in accordance with the disciplinary procedures set forth in the student and staff handbooks. Violations of the law may be referred to law enforcement agencies, and video evidence may be provided to those agencies by the superintendent.
Student expectations. The school bus is an extension of the school community. Student behavioral expectations and responsibilities will be subject to appropriate disciplinary action in accordance with the disciplinary procedures set forth in student handbooks. A, in consultation and support with the building principal, the driver is responsible for discipline on his or her bus. Students are responsible for obeying all instructions of the bus drivers. B, in the event of an infraction of rules, the driver may reprimand the offending student. C, in the event of a more serious infraction, the driver must report the offending student to the school principal or assistant principal for further disciplinary action using the bus conduct report. At no times are students to be put off the bus while en route. If, in the opinion of the driver, one or more students are acting in such a manner as to jeopardize the safety of the bus, the driver may return students to the school. A suspension of transportation privileges may only be made by the school administrator.
Next section, administration of the program. A, it is the intention of the Foxborough Public Schools to design routes that maximize safety and efficiency and minimize the amount of time a child will be on the bus. Bus routes will be established in August each school year, and parents will be notified through local media outlets. B, the superintendent of schools is responsible for the execution of the transportation policy and regulations adopted to implement safety. The school department assumes no responsibility for the safety conduct or discipline of students while waiting at the bus stops or on their way to and from bus stops. C, parents and students are reminded that pickup, drop-off times are estimated times. On any given day, the bus may be delayed due to traffic, weather, or other conditions. A 10-minute allowance either way is to be expected. D, it is important that students be out at the bus stop waiting for the school bus.
Next section, bus routes and stops. A, the guidelines for determining bus routes and stops will be, one, distance from the school; two, distance an eligible student would be required to walk to a stop; three, grade of students to be serviced; and four, safety of the streets. Bus routes are established under the direction of the superintendent designee in order to provide authorized bus stops within a reasonable walking distance of the home of every student entitled to transportation. In no case will the walking distance exceed one mile. Elementary bus stops will be at or near the homes of kindergarten students on these routes. Pickup and/or drop-off at every kindergarten student's home is not guaranteed. It is the parent/legal guardian's responsibility to notify the transportation supervisor a minimum of two weeks prior to the start of school if the student's regularly scheduled stop is different from that associated with the home address. All requested pickup and drop-off locations must be within the student's assigned school district. Parents may request with a minimum of one week's prior written notice a change of pickup or drop-off location only if said location is on the same bus route the student was assigned to. Exception to the same bus route and school district requirements is for elementary-age students who attend before or after-school programs at the YMCA in Foxborough. Centralized bus stop locations will be utilized whenever possible to reduce bus route mileage and time. They will be located in such a manner which will not require students to walk an unreasonable distance. Middle and high school students may be required to walk further distances than elementary school students. If safety is an issue along a bus route for a walker, eligibility to ride the bus will be reviewed by the transportation supervisor, business administrator, or the superintendent.
Last section. Responsibility of School Bus Drivers. School bus drivers are assigned the full responsibility of safety of students while riding to and from school and have full authority over the bus and its passengers en route to and from school and/or other activities during loading and unloading of vehicles. A. The driver is responsible for inspection of his/her vehicle before starting and at the conclusion of their route. This includes a visual circle check of the vehicle, tires, general condition, cleanliness, and safety of equipment. B. Drivers are required to adhere to all school department rules and regulations. Subsection one. The only purpose of operating school buses is to transport students. Students have responsibility for their behavior and attitude towards drivers, and drivers are to have a positive attitude towards students. Two. Punctuality. Routes, schedules, and arrival and dismissal times have been established. Drivers are to follow the routes and to be at each stop at the, at the same time each day. They should not arrive at individual schools before scheduled times. Three. Entering and leaving the school areas. Drivers are to enter and leave school at a safe operating speed and to maintain a safe operating distance between vehicles. When several buses are proceeding along the same road at the same time, drivers are to maintain safe operating distances between vehicles. Four. Drivers may not transport their own children on buses unless they are entitled to transportation privileges per existing policy.
I should read legal references. Yeah, legal references. MGL 4571-7A, B and C, 7137D, Section 7148A, 7168, Section 7171A, 71B, Sec. 4, 71B5, 71B8, 748A, 761, 7612BI, 7614. Cross-references. EEA walkers and riders. Original policy adopted 10-1876, revised 11-2183, reviewed again in 10-1788, accepted and reviewed 11-788. Policy adopted and reviewed 12-108. Policy adopted as revised 2-2513. Source, Foxborough.
I got a couple minor things that I didn't notice.
I saw that one, too.
Yeah, well, actually, I trust your judgment. There was two locations where we use his/her, and I was just wondering if we could switch to the more modern and accepted there.
I think that would work.
Yep. That's on page one, under Students' Expectation, subsection A, second line. And then the second one is last page, last section, A, first line. Driver is responsible for inspection of vehicle.
Yep.
And the only other minor one, and then if I read it correctly, page two, in the direct middle, Bus Routes and Stops, Section A, under the 1, 2, 3, 4 delineation, if you look at number three.
Great.
Thanks.
Who should be an S.
Yes.
It's just an S.
Who should be an S.
And that's all I have. So I leave it to you all to fix the substance.
I think the substance sounds very good. I'm assuming Dennis was involved or has read through this, and it's acceptable and agreeable with our transportation department as well. Did they have any thoughts or suggestions?
No, he actually, prior to the subcommittee meeting, Bill and I had met with him and talked some of the things that...
What you see that were struck, and then other additions. And then after they had drafted this, we went back to him again, and he read through it and felt as though that everything was really accounted for.
He actually brought some of the fore himself, so that's...
Good. Yeah, I figured as much, but I wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Yeah, the degree to which Rich and I were set up by ideas that people needed pushed for was very helpful.
What? I don't have any questions. I think it sounds, really reads well, makes sense, it's very clear. Does anyone else have any comments or thoughts for our policy subcommittee on this right now?
I'd like to move that we move the Student Transportation Policy File, EEA, forward to a second reading at our next meeting on the 27th.
Thank you, Debbie.
Can we hold on that one? We also did get the typo under Section C of Administration of the Program.
For Ether?
Thank you.
They got, they got, I saw them. They got, they got it.
There it is.
Okay.
Ether.
We're not using Ether on anybody.
I just think of like...
I don't think it's very...
Like Thor or something.
No, thank you.
It does read very interestingly.
Yes.
We're not through that.
Perfect. Oh, good catch-up.
Bill caught it and was doing this to Jen, so I didn't bring it up. I was watching all that little interplay. All right.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of bringing Policy EEA to second reading at our next meeting? Brent?
Oh, sorry.
5-0-0. Thank you. Okay. We're moving right along.
Yeah.
Nice job, Policy Subcommittee. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know you have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday to talk about concussion policy and...
Therapy dogs.
Therapy dogs, so.
Oh, I like therapy dogs.
Just those two.
Excellent.
That was it, yeah.
That's great. All right, and then we're going to talk a little bit about therapy dogs in our next section, which is the District Community Report with Dr. Berdus and Dr. Mello, because I saw something in here about therapy dogs.
Yes, and hoping to be able to pilot that once the policy is in place. So this community report is going to be the eighth edition.
Wow.
Can you believe that?
I can.
Eight years later, and there's been so much information...
This is the eighth?
That has been shared to the community. And one of the things that I think that with this publication, it's so wonderful, is that it doesn't go to just parents of students in the district. It goes to every single community member and community businesses as well. So when we started this eight years ago, it was a way to really put the information out there as far as Foxborough, all that we had to offer. It was to really meet one of our strategies and our strategic plan as well. I will say, eight years later, we've been through many different renditions of this, and this one, we're going to turn it over to Dr. Mello, because she's the one who has spent all of the time, and with the new ideas that are here, they're hers. So I think that it's really exciting to see a little bit of a different format here, and at the same time, really getting all of the input, too, from all of the administrators and being able to put some different information, but she was able to make it all work, so.
Well, it was great. Dr. Berdus had the idea to bring it to the admin team.
Yeah.
To see what they thought were the most important, salient points that we should be sharing with the community. I think from our perspective, this is, as Dr. Berdus said, this is our way to share with the community some of the things that they might not be aware of that are going on in our schools.
Right.
And to give them a sense of what we're all about and what's important to us. One of the things that, I think it was two years ago or three years ago that we did the Portrait of the Graduate?
It's going on three years now, though.
On three years.
Yeah.
The idea of that being front and center really, hopefully speaks that we are all about students and the values that we have, our mission, all of that being front and center is an important way for us to communicate that to the community. Also, one of the changes this year is that we did minimize the size of the school administration and the schools, but at the same time, to make it more about the graduate, and also highlight that we were commended for being, or recognized for being in the top 50 schools in Massachusetts by Boston Magazine. But the addition of our Twitter handles, I know I'm the Twitter person around here, but if we're going to keep talking about it, then it's important that people know how to find us.
Agreed.
So we included that. That's new this year, something different. Is there anything else that's new on the cover? Although we did want to make one change. Should we talk about that now?
It's, and I made it up on the screen.
You made it up on the screen. Okay, perfect. So we will change it later.
So what we're talking about here is at the last meeting, you voted to change the Director of Special Education to Director of Student Services.
Right.
And we needed to make that change here as that title had changed, so that is the only other...
That was really a test to see if you were paying attention.
That makes sense.
It was good.
I didn't catch that one.
I didn't catch it either.
I still hung up on the, just calling you a twit.
Moving to the, to the second page. Adding some soundbites to the top. Do we have the second page up there?
Yes.
Let's see if it will go. Maybe it doesn't like it from a distance. Under the Did You Know section, some of the things that we talk about in our Baselines and Benchmarks reports, that we talk about at this committee, or that we talk about at Parent Leaders Group, or that we talk about at PTO, were things that we wanted to share with the community. So, starting with the fact that we have 30 different languages in our district, from 38 different countries, and those languages are spoken in the homes of our students, and speaking to the work we've been doing around equity and diversity and cultural proficiency, it's exciting to know that that work is driven by the students that are in front of us. That's who we have now in our classrooms. Also, great to highlight once again that Foxborough charges no fees for athletics, transportation, parking, or extracurricular clubs and activities. I think we are really in the minority in that department, and it's important for our community to know that we value their support, and I'm sure that the parents and the students value their support. That allows that to be possible. We have extended day programs at our elementary and middle school. We have aftercare at the middle school and before and after at the elementary for a very reasonable fee. I think we are fully subscribed, Mr. Yukna. It's a very popular service. This year, I don't know if you heard, but the Bit Auction raised over $70,000 for enrichment programs and field trips.
That's fantastic.
So that students don't have to pay when they go on field trips.
That's a, that is a new soundbite or the Did You Know. And I think it's a valuable one.
Yes, that was suggested by Mr. Stanton, and I think that was a good one. Seventy-four percent of our teachers, so our teachers who work here in Foxborough, have taught in Foxborough, so not just teaching, but in Foxborough for more than six years, and 54%...
More than six?
More than six.
What's the percentage?
Seventy-four. And 54% have taught here more than 10 years. So people come here and they stay, they tend to stay.
But that's not necessarily all of their teaching experience.
All their teaching experience, correct. That's right.
That's interesting.
I mean, that speaks to longevity here in Foxborough.
Yes.
But our teachers are actually even more experienced for the most part.
Absolutely. As we know, our students have opportunity to travel globally, and some of the places they get to go include Costa Rica, France, Spain, and England, and we know we had our special trip to Australia last year for music. That's not an annual trip, but that was a special one. And as you all know from our Baselines and Benchmarks report, our high school students do score well above the national average on both the SAT and ACT exams. So those are some of the soundbites that we wanted to include under the Did You Know section.
Yeah, I thought those were great changes.
And then the what's new in the headlines were sort of there before. They've been re-titled a little bit. So just little soundbites about each of the elementary schools. Obviously, the borough is undergoing their renovation. The Igo is hoping, once we have a policy, to pilot the therapy dog. Taylor School had a book club for parents around growth mindset.
That's great.
Which was, I think, very well received. The Ahern, as part of the, our efforts around diversity and celebrating differences, they have been working on restorative justice circles. They've been hosting a Courageous Conversations group for the faculty around cultural proficiency. They've had ongoing professional development. They have really made this a focus. I mean, even to where who's on the walls and are all students represented, and it's really in the fiber of all their conversation and everything that you're doing.
Actually, could we do a teaching and learning highlight on the restorative justice circles at some point during this school year?
Please.
Because that is very interesting to me, and I'd like to hear more about it.
And we have our, actually, we have our elementary principals going to a training tomorrow on it, too.
Yes, all three of them together.
Whenever it fits in, but we could talk to Karen. Sorry to interrupt the community report.
No, that's great.
I won't remember it.
They've actually had really positive outcomes from that, so they're very, very excited.
I would like to hear more about that, but I think it's a great, also a great thing to add into the community report.
I agree. And as we've seen, and as Ms. Lord has updated us before, our athletic complex is almost complete. We've been watching our concessions stand come together.
Yes, we have.
And we are hoping that by next fall, everything is...
Fall.
Ready to go.
My grandson's going to get awful hungry, Mr. Yukna, between now and then.
Bring your bag of candy, and he'll be all...
Not the spring, Bill.
It's all weather and...
A lot of weather-related.
Yeah. It'd be a treat and a surprise if it were soon.
And that's a matter of being fully completed, but we're talking about landscaping and the bricks and all of that, too.
So we may have functioning bathrooms for the spring, potentially, if we don't have a rough march weather-wise. Fingers crossed.
Yes.
That's when we got all our winter last year.
Yes, and the year before. So we're going to hope for a better march and some mild weather to move forward with this, but that's out of our hands. If we could just vote on that here, that would be great.
Wouldn't that be great? I know Dr. Berdus would really like that a lot.
We would all like that. But no, that is excellent to put out to the community as well.
Well, and I know that we've...
Bless you.
Bless you, Joe. I know that we've talked here, but even at our Parent Leaders Group last time, we engaged the parents in getting on Twitter, knowing how to search for what's going on in the Foxborough Public School, so we thought we would share that with the community. If they put in the hashtag #TheBorough2035, they can see what's happening in our schools. And our schools are tweeting a lot. There's a lot of great stuff going on. And then in the headline section, of course, we'd be remiss if we didn't mention our award-winning music program and their third-place finish at the Ellington, essentially Ellington Jazz Festival.
We came in third?
Yes.
Last March, yeah.
Yeah, last year.
Well, last year, yeah.
Yes.
And they should be making their, February, I think, is when they cut their...
Actually, they, they cut their, they're going to cut their tape, I believe, in January on the 17th, if I'm remembering correctly.
Well, it's, it's...
It's coming up.
Sometimes it's in February, so.
It's either this weekend. I saw it on Facebook.
Very exciting.
Coming up.
Very exciting.
Also, as you all heard before, we were proud to recognize our first 12 students to be awarded the Seal of Biliteracy from the Commonwealth, recognizing their fluency in at least two languages. As part of our ongoing efforts to explore diversity and differences, our food service team has been having a Try It Tuesday at our elementary schools once a month, and they do food tastings from around the world during those times, and they have been very well received. Kids have been excited to try different things, which I always marvel over, because when I was a kid, I didn't like to try anything new. And then, as you know, our seventh and eighth grade students have been exploring Project Lead the Way, and we just added to that what the units are and that it is a project-based STEM program and that we're hoping to expand it. So I don't know if you have any thoughts about anything that you felt we should have added there that wasn't included there, something that's going on, or any typos or anything that you see. Obviously, we continue to have our district overview. Obviously, we continue to have our district overview. Those pieces from our Baselines and Benchmarks, we thought were important to show where we are with our enrollment, our special ed, and our free...
Yeah, that's critical information that we need to continue to share.
One question I have, going back to the statistic at the top of the page, it says "Did You Know?", and I'm just wondering, because of the comment, the clarification, where we're saying that it's Foxborough that we're talking about, that seventy-four percent of teachers have taught more than six years and fifty-four percent more than ten years in Foxborough.
Should I add in Foxborough again?
Because we do have, that's overall, so if we're talking about...
Shall we say in Foxborough twice?
I believe we have a larger, we have a larger percentage, if the committee felt as though you wanted to show the experience.
And change it completely.
Add to it, to where you're showing what the Foxborough piece is, but then the percentage of teachers...
So the second part instead. I only say that because there are very tight space constraints, so I just want to make sure we put in exactly what you want. So if we took, if we left in the first part, taught in Foxborough, more than six years, and then the second soundbite was about overall, average years of experience, we could change that.
I do, I think it's important to emphasize both that our teachers come here and stay here, but also that we have a large number of teachers that have a significant, I mean, more than ten years of experience, really. I can't remember.
So how is, how is this going to sound again?
Yes.
So how will that possibly sound?
I think it would, it would read seventy-four percent of teachers have taught in Foxborough for more than six years, and then the second part would be something to the effect of the average number of years of experience, or something around that soundbite, for our teaching staff is this number of years.
X percent.
Yeah.
I could offer, I think that actually dramatically changed the statement. So when you made the statement, as you made it here, we're making a statement is about keeping teachers in this community because of the power of what happens in this community, and whether that power means budgetary support, or supportive teachers' efforts, or whatever it is. So you're making a singular statement about the value of this community for the satisfaction and employment of teachers. If we shifted a little bit to longevity and this, you could do that, but it changes the focus.
It does change the focus.
I think what you're saying here is that you get seventy-four percent that are over sixty, it's three-quarters of your staff stays six years plus, and then you got over fifty percent of your staff that are over ten years, because of their value and their belief in district. I think there's great power there in the way this is stated. Maybe reworded a tweak, just to get what you said, which was stay in ten years for ten years in Foxborough, but I think you let the statement stand. This talks about the satisfaction of teachers in this community.
I think you've changed my mind, actually.
Which I think is the more subtle and powerful argument.
I like this very much, and of course, you know, some of that drop from the seventy-four to the fifty-four is going to have to be because husbands move, wives move, families have to, you know...
Or they're newer hires, right.
Years in education.
That will be here for a long time.
Right, so I, this was very impactful for me to read.
And it's a new piece for us. We haven't included it in the past.
I like the way Richard said it. I just, I think we just need to make it maybe a little bit more clear.
Maybe lead with, teachers find, somehow say, teachers find great satisfaction in being employed here. Seventy-four percent are here for six years or more, fifty-four percent for ten years more. Lead with something, and then just give the two stats, right? Because I think you were right, that the fifty-four by itself wasn't clear what it, what it was.
I think if we talk about our retention rates, which would shorten up the front, I might even be able to get a third stat in there about what percent are, you know, fifteen-plus or something like that.
I don't think it hurts either, but I just really liked what this said about they want to stay here.
I know.
I think the most powerful stat is your lead, because after six years, they're have professional status.
That's right.
And they've had options, and they've been teaching long enough to look, and they're opting to stay.
Exactly.
So, and they're, they're young, but they're experienced. Or, sorry, they're newer in the profession, potentially, but still very experienced. That's good.
Okay, I appreciate the feedback, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
One question, Dr. Mello.
Before we turn the page?
Yeah, and if it's, only if it helps to make a good case even better, the, you ever read on the percentage of students engaged in Project Lead the Way across, or is that still growing?
Well, it would be a hundred percent of students in seventh and eighth. That's a good question. Is it eight...
It's high, it's worth saying.
It's a hundred percent in seventh grade through APP Tech, but some kids are getting more than one Project Lead the Way. It might not be the best year to say it, just because, well, we could say it, but next year it will grow. Next year it will be in, it'll be a hundred percent of students in sixth, seventh, and eighth. This year, it's a hundred percent in seventh, and then there's pockets in eighth. What do you guys think?
It's still better than a lot of their comparison schools.
Okay.
I'm just, the program itself, in some schools, it's more of a niche thing, even though they want it to be widespread. I think through your efforts, Foxborough's made good on the grant funding that you've received, and scaled up the program in pretty short order.
You know, that's something I didn't say. I didn't, I didn't comment on the fact that we had the grant funding to support that. We've talked about that in the past. It would just take...
The number of sources that funded it, it wasn't just one.
It might muddy the water. I was more, only if you, only if you think it helps the case, I just, if you have a hundred percent of the seventh and eighth graders doing it, that's, says something about your commitment to the program.
Right, I mean, it's a powerful statement, even if you say a hundred percent seventh grade, whatever percent eighth grade, and the plan is, the goal for next year is that a hundred percent of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
Yeah, you could, I mean, you could say all seven.
We're rolling it out, kind of thing.
It's not a niche thing that you're doing.
You could even, you could even say, this year was the first year, right?
Correct.
So you could take the word from R to began participating. So that might be even powerful to say, seventh, a hundred percent, eighth, fifty percent, began participating in Project Lead the Way in nineteen twenty. So then you're saying in the first year of it, something like that.
In twenty twenty, nineteen twenty?
Nineteen twenty. Nineteen twenty, twenty twenty, nineteen twenty, nineteen twenty, no, nevermind.
Don't even.
The nineteen twenty school year, not the twenty hour. With the twenty twenty, it messes you all up, no.
I could do that.
Twenty nineteen.
Yeah, twenty nineteen.
Thanks for entertaining that.
No, thank you for sharing. On our last page, on the left side, this is information we've traditionally reminded people about our graduating class, how many students go on to continue with their education, specialized programs, military, workforce, and gap year. We haven't always included a gap year, because there isn't always a student population that explores that. This year, we had less than one percent, but there was at least somebody who did that, so.
That's nice.
Included our advanced placement courses. One piece of feedback that one of the principals had, and I tried to mitigate it by adding the word "online," was the last bullet under the AP section, where it says additional AP courses may be taken. It used to say through virtual high school, so I added the word "online." They thought maybe if people didn't have context, they wouldn't really know what virtual high school was. Do you think that does it by adding the word "online"?
I think so.
Okay. As you continue to go down, our AP performance, just, this is all from our Baselines and Benchmarks, and then our OECD result. Oh, I never say that right. OECD results in the bottom there. On the right, I thought it was a good time to share with the community where we are on our technology, and we are not a one-to-one district by design. However, we are on-demand, one-to-one, and so by showing how many computer labs we have and how many mobile laptops we have, in fact that we are one-hundred percent wireless, we wanted to just showcase that to the community. Anything you want to add to that?
No, I think, I think that it's just a really good point, it's because we do get that question a lot, are, why aren't we a one-to-one district? Because we've, by design, a one-to-one opportunities, and when you look at the number of devices that we have here, and this will come up in our CIP budget in just a little bit, because of being able to refresh these systems and to keep them up to date, it's really important for the community to see how many devices we do have in each of the schools.
And then our investment in our technology integration specialists are really paramount to us really leveraging that technology in meaningful ways to enhance and enrich our instruction, and they've really helped elevate what's happening in our classrooms. And some of the new tools that we have that we wanted to showcase, we heard about the B-bots just a couple of weeks ago, so good for the community to know that even our youngest kindergarten students are coding. The green screen technology that you also saw in that same teaching and learning highlight allows kids to, I mean, the...
That was so much fun.
Yeah, it's amazing, and there are endless possibilities of things that you can do with that. You saw a couple with the virtual field trip and the animation, but there's so many other things that they can do. And then the 3D printers that we have at the middle school and the high school, there's so much that, we're still just on the, on the edge of what we're doing with our 3D printers. Part of that is in Project Lead the Way, but really fostering innovation, teaching kids about good digital citizenship and problem solving. I think the shift that I've been waiting to see, and it's starting to happen, not just for us, but for other districts, is to use the 3D printers purposefully. It's not a novelty to print a little elephant.
Right.
It's why, it's a problem that you're solving that you're using that.
Makes something you need.
Exactly. So in Project Lead the Way, it could be creating a prosthetic arm or a prosthetic brace for your foot. It's really cool things that they can do with that, so we thought we would showcase that as well.
Very good.
Small point is, make your green screen and your 3D printers plural.
I wondered that.
Only because it sounds like we got one.
Yeah.
And I know you have more.
And I'm glad you said that, because I wondered that as well. Do you all agree with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
And then, of course, our last page, as you know, this goes home as a mailer, so the top part is the address information. I'm proud to say that we had to reduce the font this year so that we could really capture some of the really amazing colleges and universities that our students were accepted to. It's a very impressive list. It's just not an exhaustive list, it's not every single one, but we tried to grab as many as we could. And it's important to note that even though our students were accepted to these schools, they didn't actually go to all of them, or some of them said no to them, like if they got accepted and said, no, I'd rather go here, but we wanted to include them anyway. Is, are there any glaring omissions that you see?
I didn't see any omissions, and I know a lot of the kids who got accepted to a lot of these schools, but Wake Forest only has one R.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. I could have been autocracked.
How did I miss that? I'm just, I'm not gonna say anything.
We're a team here, Joe. We're all covered.
Oh, my God. They're gonna take back my megaphone, I think.
No, it's always good to share this information with the community. We see it when the guidance department comes and gives the review, but I think it is also, you know, good, good info to send out as well.
As I, just scanning this, and again, only as a point of pride, if it was easy to discern the number of different schools in different states that they're in, or different whatevers, just because, they're going all over, man, or they're getting accepted all over, which I, as a tagline under recent, or along with recent college acceptances, to me, that says a lot, even more so, more so than digging into the list itself, is that we have kids looking in all regions of the country, and that's, says something about the community we are, and, you know, how wide, how far afield our kids are looking.
I think this looks great, Allison. Good discussion.
Thank you.
Yes, well, we took a village, and thank you for putting your eyes on it and for your input. Great job, Joe, thank you.
Thank you for all the work.
When is this gonna go out?
That's an excellent question.
Oh, that's a...
I think we were waiting for you to lay your eyes on it.
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Berdows, what do you think?
We send it out at the end of January.
That's what I thought, usually. Okay, do you need a motion for us to approve this, or?
Just by consensus.
Yeah, I think so. I couldn't...
Very good. Any other thoughts before we move on?
I think, I think it's a really good job, really. I just pulled up last year's at the same time, comparing the two.
Yeah.
It's a bold difference.
Oh, I'm glad that you said that.
Yeah, I really think it is.
I agree.
You took that whole half a page of charts and little tiny graphs, and turned it into some really nice grab facts about who we are, about who we are as a district, so I think it's good.
I agree. I thought about putting both of them in.
That was nice.
It's really huge.
I think this is great for this year. One of the things I'd like you to consider at some point in the future is either what we're doing as far as reducing carbon footprint or facilities. I know we've talked about, you know, all the water fountains here and all that kind of stuff, but just as a general community member, what are we doing to reduce the costs? Or views.
That's great. We actually have a lot that we could say about that, too.
Right.
Yeah.
If you have space this time, but it looked like it was pretty full, so.
It's full, man.
But thank you.
Good point. All right.
And we're right on schedule.
We are, pretty much. Eight oh five PM, FY twenty-one, budget continued discussion. Dr. Berdows, Mr. Yukna, who would like to begin?
We have the boxes.
It'll, as I click, it'll come up.
As you know, last time, we started the discussion with a, our preliminary budget, we did meet with the subcommittee since the last meeting. We reviewed some of the issues previously discussed with the committee, but also some additional items under review, and discussed the details behind all of those. And, you know, our biggest issue here, quite honestly, is enrollment numbers. And while I appreciate what the four students were saying, we have also dropped sixty students over the last seven years on the high school level, and, you know, we have to be responsible in how we're looking at our, our class loads and our, and our things, and, you know, again, we have very manageable class sizes, so we don't feel that the recommendations we're making are things that will be detrimental to the program, to the students, in any way, because otherwise, we wouldn't ask to make them. We think we've been responsive in the enrollment levels, and as we have talked to you over many years now with the reductions we've made on the elementary level, and the reductions we started with last year on the middle school, and have further done this year, because, again, the students aren't in the chairs to, to basically justify having a classroom teacher, you know, there. So when that happens, we make these type of adjustments, and it will eventually, you know, cycle back around, and you'll be asked to put positions back in when the enrollments come back into the right fold there. So the top part of this chart, basically, is what was in the original budget discussion that we had, with what positions we were talking about changing, and, and based on enrollment. So there was basically two things, or three things when it came to staffing. The first one was minor changes that we had to make this year relative to the occupational therapist for the IGO and the nurse at the high school. Those are in place as long-term subs this year, and we know that we need to keep them going forward because of what we have as far as either IEPs or student needs on the high school level. The staffing adjustments below that, the second section, are basically, you know, items mostly in the middle school that deal directly with the enrollment level. And as you, as we said last year, we came in with ten sections in the fifth grade, we dropped it to eight sections. Those eight sections are now moving forward to the sixth grade. Obviously, we're going to drop the sixth grade to the same eight sections, and the incoming fourth graders will also fill the fifth grade at eight sections. So, you know, that all makes sense, but now, in the second year, obviously, the other parts are the added courses that are taken within the day, that, again, students are no longer there. So whether it's wellness, or art, or tech ed, as you have, as you have fewer students coming through, you also have less times in which they're going to be sitting within those classes. So now we're in the second year where we actually, the, the amount of a change makes sense. It was very hard, you couldn't do it in the first year. So you see some adjustments that have been made there as far as world language and wellness and so on. And then, again, on the fourth grade at the IGO, basically, that's a position that we're, we're concerned withholding at this point, because we have a third grade group moving up, that is a larger class grouping, so that, you know, we're gonna move that same number of sections up to fourth grade, and obviously have to fill that and control that. And then the high school math teacher, as, as previously talked about, you know, basically was in that first grouping. The third part of the staffing issue was programs that we have to reinforce, basically to do the best thing by kids, but also to help to be efficient in our programming for the special needs program. We know for a fact that we have built very good programs internally, when we have a large enough cohort of students that we can afford to do it. You can't build a class for one student, but you can build a class for five or six students, and be able to do the right thing for them within the district, rather than have them go out of the district to get those services. So again, we're looking at basically a therapy-based teacher for one of those positions, we're looking for a language-based teacher for another, and then an assistant to support one of the classrooms that currently exist. And so those are additional positions that we have to add within this, again, to make the overall program work. And then the, the final thing, which is not, obviously, a staff-related item, it is the out-of-district sped costs that we are incurring for tuitions, and the, while the number, you know, is a million-dollar number, it basically is the impact of two years. This year that we're currently in, which we are over-budget on, and, and working our way through that to stay within our overall budget, and obviously, what we're seeing coming at us for next year's tuitions. In the last meeting we had, we talked to you about the fact that as of the day we were having that meeting, we already had just gotten another new one that was coming in district, but basically had an out-of-district placement that we were also going to have to absorb into this. We don't absorb it this year, but we absorb it in next year. So we have a million 360,000 based on that. So that was all the stuff that we talked about last time and that what our PowerPoint presentations were based on. The lower section is what we talked about with the subcommittee relative to some additional changes that, you know, we feel that need to be made at this point, again, based on enrollments and also based on some additional information from the out-of-district.
Can I ask a question about the upper section, since we've just talked about it? So we were challenged today with a statement by some students about the math position. And I, having built a few master schedules on my own, I understand what happens in grade six and seven and eight when things from here move there and they move up, okay? In high school, it's a little different animal, correct? So we've just selected math at the high school. Is there any more background you can offer to the discussion that came forward by these students about why math is the choice? Possibly that there's more math classes of lower numbers, that we kept advanced classes at smaller numbers or something like that? That that would add to our thought process, because we've not asked you for numbers at the high school level, have we? Specific numbers which delineate sections. So we have a little bit of a statement by some students here in only one position, so that might help.
So I think the number one piece or component to that is that in the other core subject areas, we have nine teachers. In the math, we currently have 10. So there is a, you know, a difference there, and again, it's the same amount of kids that are coming through, so it's not like there's a difference there.
You might have, like, for instance, in social studies, you have 10, but they're not all full-time teachers.
Correct.
So as far as the FTE, the teaching load.
Still a 9.2 FTE, so it's a relative number. The secondary part, I think, to that is, again, when we looked at class sizes, you know, again, with all due indifference to the four students we're talking to, we have a disproportionate share of smaller class sizes in the math area to the point where, and the studies actually show it the other way around, that the class size of a tiny class size is not as always as appropriate as a class size that is close to 20. And so we're running underneath that, and we feel, again, by making this one change, we are not significantly changing those numbers or the offerings that we are doing. So this is not a punitive thing towards math. This is strictly a calculated basis of looking at all of the math teachers, all of the areas that they're teaching, what the class sizes have been and are, and looking at that as compared to all of the other subjects that are out there. So it's that basis. If you remember, a few years ago, we had the same kind of discussion on English. And English was pulled back down, too. So that actually happened, I think, three or four years ago, if I recall correctly, and then, you know, now we're here. So.
I think that's a very, I thank you for that answer. I think that's an important answer. It was asked of us, and I think that kind of clarity is of value to us, you know? I don't think we necessarily need to get into the deep-down sections.
I think that was a helpful question.
The nitty-gritty, but I think if we're gonna be approached with that question, I don't think we should go in blind. So I think that's a very thoughtful answer. Thank you.
I appreciate your question and your response. And then just, you know, to the point, our students, occasionally, a class, you know, kids switch out, kids switch into a different section, and it does increase the size of that section. Maybe we need to, you know, work on minimizing that, you know, to resolve the issue that the boys raised.
Scheduling is always.
I know. It's tricky that way, but it's not, that's not a staffing thing. That is trying to meet students, schedule things. I can say with, I am almost 100% positive that neither of my sons ever had more than 20 kids in a math class. I really don't think so.
And again, we're facing a roll-down on the enrollment, which is coming to the high school and is going to get actually larger next year and, you know, over the next couple of years. So we think appropriately, we're doing it now. And again, if that turns around, hey, well, you know, we will be the first ones back at the table saying that now, okay, we've gotten back to where class sizes are up to this level and they need to be addressed. But, you know, solely on what the enrollments are right now and what we're offering.
And I think that's really an important piece, is looking, where we've been making these adjustments at the elementary level for years based on the class sizes, and you have at the largest 23 students in a classroom. It's now, it's now hitting the middle school and the high school. Our senior class is a larger class, so those boys are seniors. It's a larger class than the classes that are coming in at this point in time.
By how much, Amy? I mean, I know we know these numbers, but just to give an example.
We have some classes at the elementary level that are 148 to 168.
Yeah, I would say 150 to 175, 180 is the lower level. We're graduating a class right now that's gonna be about 212.
220, yeah.
And the class coming in is 200 at eighth grade, and we know we lose a significant number going to private schools. So we're probably looking at a 175 to 180 coming in. Again, another drop in the enrollment level. So what we're talking about is not going to affect these four students because of the current enrollment, but it's either another drop in the enrollment that's coming forward that we're talking about.
And it's a wave.
They don't.
It's a wave. It's a wave. Right. And we need to be able to respond as that goes through. But again, if we find three, four years from now we're needing to come back, we wanna show that we're doing the fiscally responsible, you know, move so that when that wave does come back up, it's a matter of we've made adjustments along the way.
And because there are fewer students, the good points that our students did make this evening about how our teachers provide extra help, they will still be able to do that because their class sizes are really gonna remain the same because there are fewer students coming.
I also think it's a very important point for you guys to remember, that you also support tutors.
Yes.
So during the day, we have a math tutor on all day long in this building, five days a week. And we also have English tutors. So there are, you know, designed and built-in extra ways for students to get help. Obviously, do you go to the teacher that you're working with because you probably have a closer relationship? You know, if you can do that, you do that more often, probably. But we have built-in resources, you know, within our budget that basically give us other safeguards for our students to be able to have access to.
And in addition to that, as an outcome of our math review, we invested in an adaptive technology, it's software, that students, the software knows where they are, and it can give them prescribed assistance at their level to bring them to the next level. And we have access to that as well, particularly in the earlier grades, in the Algebra I classes. So we have, our students have access to that as well.
Thank you for that. And I'm not alarmed with math. I just thought that the detail behind it, I think that critical number of 10 to 9 is a very clear statement about the challenge of building a master schedule in a high school, because it is very fluid and it can move so, it can teeter like this, it can teeter just like that. And you keep it for this situation, but you have to take it away for the next situation. So I think that's very sound, and I think it was important to us to talk about that.
We need the students to be there.
That's right. You need bodies. That's right.
Okay.
So in the blue square that you see up there, these are the additional changes that we're looking to make, again, based on, the first part being based on enrollment at the high school. We're looking at a reduction of a .2 FTE on the art level, health and wellness of a .4, world language .4, and tech ed .2. Again, these are all enrollment-driven, based on class size and student counts within the building. It's not, you know, it's just over, it's a 1.2 FTE in total. It is a complicated and tricky scenario to do because you're not talking about a full FTE of anything. However, again, I think it's being responsive, not only to the taxpayers, but to the enrollment levels that we currently have. And that will reduce our budget by $80,000. As we noted in the upper conversation, that we have had an additional body coming into the out-of-district placement tuitions, which is going to increase our overall budget by another $49,000. However, we have had two scenarios that have been confirmed in those tuitions. One is that a family did leave town and moved to another town, and that student is now enrolled in that other town, and therefore, although we're responsible for it for the rest of this year, in the following year, they will become that other town's responsibility, which is a savings of about $100,000. And then another child who actually will graduate this year on June 30th on schedule. So again, that will be a reduction of a tuition that we were expecting. So that helps us take 185,000 off of the tuition budget. And with our overall count, we will need another 25,000 in our transportation budget. So our net savings in that area from our previous budgets, 110,000, which brings our total budget request year over year to a million 380,178, which is 3.82%. As we have discussed in the past, the Board of Selectmen have put out a request that budgets be in the 3.5% range, which is a million 264. And that puts us basically at 116,000 over the 3.5. But at this point, again, we feel that the biggest differential here is something that we don't have a large control on, and that is the out-of-district. As you can look at, the out-of-district number itself is, the equivalency, actually, it's just over what the 3.5% is. So with that number, if we had no other changes, we would have been over-budget. So I think we've made a number of changes to keep us relatively close to that. And I think in the review with the subcommittee, at this point, school administration feels that this is as far as we can go at this point and still keep all the programs and everything else in place.
Bill, if you would.
Sure.
Because I think it's important, by way of contrast, the last full meeting we had, we were sitting at about, what, 4.?
We were, yeah, we were at like 4.9.
So when the budget was first presented, we were at 4.?
Yeah.
Say that again?
4.9.
4.9. And through getting down into the weeds here and the granularity of it all, we've gotten it down to 3.82.
Right.
Which is.
And, but I think, so, I mean, I heard the Board of Selectmen as well, the thing that I, that I talk about when I use other people's sounding boards is, we're a little bit over that 3.5%, but there is also a staff reduction, which has always been kind of the thing that we've heard, both from Board of Selectmen, we've heard from Advisory Committee, we've heard at the town meetings, that budgets are going up. We keep adding people, we keep adding people, we keep adding people. The budget is going up because we're required, we have requirements that we have to meet. We are still staying as close as we can to 3.5%. And at the same time, because of our enrollments not impacting what we expect to be our results for our schools, but we are able to support a staff reduction.
That's right.
And that's a really important message.
Well, in addition to that, the last, I think it was the last few years, the school department has come in under the number that the Selectmen have asked for as well. And that's why enriching the programs and expanding services, so I think.
At a risk of, I don't know, maybe politically being incorrect, we don't build our budget based on the Selectmen's approach. We build it based on what student needs are and what the community expects our budget to be. We obviously always monitor what the town is saying, and we try to work very closely with that. And I think the, you know, the outcome here is, you know, we knew we were gonna also create a problem if we didn't continue to look at this budget and make sure that we did the right things on it. But we have, as you have pointed out, we have made a number of adjustments. We have done, if it wasn't for those three added positions in the upper section for sped programs that we think we need to do, we could, yes, save three positions. We would have actually been 5.4 positions down in this budget. But the reality is, we believe that's an efficiency in saving us money long-term rather than putting all those children out into out-of-district tuitions and transportation by being able to keep them in district at a more reasonable cost. So we have to kind of walk, you know, fine line here of doing the right thing for students and also look for the efficiencies in what we can do at the same time. And I think we've done a very good job with how we've done this program breakup, you know, for the, for the school.
As a follow-up to that, and I don't need an answer now, but I'm curious, because I think it's relevant to the argument that you're making and all the work that you all have done, is what's the cost on the road not taken, meaning bringing those three positions and having kids going to outplacement for that? Again, I don't expect.
Well, no, it's actually pretty simple, because we know what the numbers are. You know, we're talking about, we're talking about a cohort, just in one of those, that would be six students. So six students on our average out-of-district of around 60,000 to 70,000, plus transportation of 100.
Transportation alone, right.
You can see there's a, you know, significant savings, but again, we're not doing it for that savings. We're doing it because the best thing for children is to keep them within their community if you can offer a program that's structured for them.
Right.
And we think that the advantage of us doing it is, it's students all under our control that all are gonna get a better service, we feel, if we can, because we get, all of our other resources are available to them as well. So we've been able to do a lot more things, not just that class that's existing, but they have every other resource we have within our school district that's also available to them. Which is not the same as when you, you know, obviously, you put them in an out-of-district placement, there are a lot of resources available to them, but we know we can dictate and control what those resources are.
And we need to be able to respond programmatically for the students that are before us, and that changes year to year. So a number of years ago, we had a language-based program at the Ahearn, but based on the students that have been through and what the needs are, then we've gone for a couple of years and we've not had a specific language-based program. But now we have that need based on the cohort of students, so we need to respond programmatically for those students.
Right.
I would offer you that those type of positions, I've done it personally, those type of positions are some of the most sound decision-making from a budget perspective that I've personally experienced. When we bring a special ed teacher to bring those six kids into this setting of this school where the parents want them, where the community wants them, and where we can get the most resources, is some of the most sound decision-making I've ever seen in budget-making. And it should be said that way, because that's what it does. It puts the kids exactly where everyone wants them, where the community wants them, where the parents would like them, and where they have absolutely the most resources. Fiscally responsible, it's very powerful. We should never forget those points, because those are big ones.
But it impacts other students, too.
Absolutely.
Scheduling, and not just those, you know, the students that are coming. It impacts scheduling with special ed services across, so it's looking at every child across the school. And really being more efficient in scheduling and programming for all students.
And we can't do it for every student and every need.
No, 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 no.
But when we do have common needs and we can create a program, of course, it makes perfect sense to do it.
Makes a lot of sense.
Another point that's worth noting is that every expense line item in this budget is level-funded from, it's all the same as last year.
And Tina and I, before the meeting, had a quick conversation. If you look at the plant, part of our budget, obviously, it looks like it's dropped considerably over the last few years, and it has, that's the outcome of the solar fields. So our electric costs have obviously gone down significantly, but that's because now we get solar credits that the town benefits from, and obviously, we're the biggest user of power, so we're one of the bigger, you know, users of those credits. And therefore, we're not paying that out, we're getting it in the credit side of things.
It's over half a million dollars since FY17, which is great. I mean, it's a huge benefit.
For the electricity?
From the solar farm, yeah.
Awesome.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Are there any other questions about the FY21 budget?
In looking at the costs associated with the partial position cuts, are those tied, are those tied to individuals? Are those averages across the department? Are they tied to?
For practical purposes, it's the lowest paid in each one of those positions. Doesn't mean that's who it is, because obviously, that's all based on, you know, their status, their longevity, their seniority, their evaluations, and so on. But, you know, for no other reason, that's the one that was used. Could be a few dollars higher in the end, could be a few dollars lower, we just can't be sure.
I want to thank the Budget Subcommittee and, which is Bevy and Rob and Amy and Bill and Allison for your time during, you know, leading up to the holiday break. So it's certainly extremely thoughtful and deliberative. Gives us a lot to think about going forward. Okay. Thank you for giving me credit, but I actually wasn't.
One point that I've heard folks say, and I think it's worth just presenting, having somebody speak to in the meeting, is when you see, there may be a tendency, when you see some of these programs having reductions, to worry about, you know, breadth of the curriculum and things of that nature. But I know firsthand experience and from anecdotally that many teachers are actually teaching multiple levels, or when and where it makes sense for kids in the same room to keep the breadth in the curriculum. Is that accurate?
So I think what you're saying here is an example, when we think about some of our upper levels, say in art, in the arts classes. If we have an AP art class and then we have an honors level, in order to continue to offer both programs to students, at times, we'll ask the student, well, we're offering this in an AP. Would you like to take this course in an AP? Sometimes they do. Or sometimes, we've had past practice where we've been able to have two classes to where maybe it's an honors and it's an AP in one.
One section.
One section.
I know my sons had other classes like that, where it's been a CP and an honors class in the same section.
Correct. So you're still able to offer the programming for students. It gets to be creative scheduling in order to make that happen. So when we're looking at class sizes based on our enrollment, and looking at these .2 or .4 of an FTE, and saying that we're still going to be able to have really good class sizes and still be able to offer programs for students.
Good question. Anything else before we move on to CIP?
And maybe it's better after CIP, but just for the purpose of the meeting minutes and for, if we could just, the timetable.
Oh, yeah.
As I understand it, or as we have it in our notes.
Yeah.
So the next, the public hearing on this budget is January 27?
Yes.
Okay.
That's our next school committee meeting.
Right. And then we're going to be with the Advisory Committee on February 5.
Right. And we will vote on the budget on January 27.
Right. Okay.
So obviously, as we've said before, between now and then, if there's any questions or other things that you would like us to present at the next meeting before you vote, please feel free to pass that on to me. I'd be happy to do the work to put it together and, you know, make sure we have the information you need.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, my word is credited.
My word is credited to Mr. Yukna.
All right. Moving on to the discussion of the FY '21 Capital Improvement Plan Draft. Mr. Yukna?
Sure. So as you know, every year there's a separate budget discussion which is on capital items that are greater than $25,000 with a life over five years. And, you know, the town has been very supportive. You see in your package, not only the PowerPoint presentation that we're going to talk about right now, but also a five-year-out view so that the town has some ability to do some planning on its budgetary side as well. We have, for quite a few years now, had the support of the community to keep our computer hardware, software, networks, which has greatly expanded over time from what it was when it first started, where it was just basically a computer refresh, to now where we run a business-grade backroom, if you will, with two data centers between us and the town side. Fully wireless, as was pointed out by Allison before, in all of our buildings. Keeping all of our software licensed and up-to-date. And basically having the ability, from a technical support point of view, to maintain the equipment. We've had modest increases here in this line. But again, when you look at the fact that, again, as the community report showed, that we have virtually one-to-one, we have about 2,400 computers that are in the district that we're maintaining. And by basically giving us a constant amount of money on an annual basis, it allows us not only to have about an average five-year refresh, but also to try to maintain all of these other items that are in the process. So, you know, the $200,000 is just merely that. It's maintaining what we have today. Obviously, some things have a life, we try to extend them as long as we can. But, you know, we talked about this before, simple things like the whiteboards, which were put into place years and years ago throughout the district, all have a life to them where the, not only the whiteboard itself, technology has changed significantly and has improved, but also the projectors themselves only last so long. It got to a point where the original projectors, the bulb themselves was more than the projector was worth. So, you know, so we have to obviously constantly upgrade those when they start to go because the technology isn't worth anything if it's not operating within the classroom when we need it. So that's our number one, always is our number one request from the town in the process. Our number two request is the buses. As you know, we run our own fleet. Again, the, probably the single largest issue that the bus transportation network, not even just us, is facing is the having bus drivers. There was just a recent write-up, I think it was in Framingham, where basically the school district is going after the supplier because they don't have enough drivers to get the children to school on time. And so that's a battle we're fighting. I'm going to make some recommendations over the next month or so as far as ways for us to try to attract some more. You know, even if it's just the people that are doing the fill-in runs for when bus drivers are sick or on different, for different reasons. Because without those, we don't have a transportation department. But we have found that, and we model this pretty much every single year that we look at, what does it cost us to buy buses, to ensure buses, to run the fleet staff-wise? And we compare it to what the outside market has done. And the outside market has greatly increased in its cost to the point where this is, and has been for a number of years, the more prudent financial model for a district. I think it is Framingham, I hope I'm not misquoting that. They're even talking about trying to go back to running their own buses for the same reason that they could have the control over it. As much as they know that that would cost them to do it. You know, you need, without the control level, you have a real problem to deal with it. So at this point, we actually run one more full-size bus than we did a year ago. That's because we took the Metco run inside. And by doing that, we saved a significant amount of money, almost $30,000. Just on the labor side of that. And, but obviously it meant one more bus being on the road. What we did was, one of the two buses that we intended to retire last year, we just kept as a backup because now we did have an additional bus on the road. Fortunately, we haven't had to use it much, and it's definitely on the chopping block this year because it needs to go. But we're looking at two full-size 77-passenger buses and one, what we call mini, which is a 30-passenger, which we use on a daily route mostly for, whether it's our sped students or if we're running special, you know, programs within the district to take students to different programs throughout. This one won't need to be a wheelchair-accessible one because we already have one. We don't, knock on wood, at this point, have a child that's in a wheelchair, but we still have two that are wheelchair-accessible, one that's relatively new. So we're not concerned about that. That will help us reduce the cost a little bit. But as you can see, the mini buses aren't much less than the full-size buses because they have everything, including air conditioning, because we run those buses during the summertime. Those are our summer school buses that we need to run during the summer. So we've always done that with those buses. So you're looking at a total of 243,500. The buses all now, as you know, are equipped with the five-point cameras. Does two things, as we noted in our thing, in the discussion earlier. And that is, one, it's the safety of what's happening on the bus. We want the bus driver to be looking at the road, not at the students. But the other side of it is, we now have, one of the five points is an outside camera. And we have had a number of incidents where police have been notified of cars that are just driving through our, you know, marked arms of stop.
Unbelievable.
Takes the picture of the car with the license plate, and we give it to the police to deal with it.
That's great.
So I think that's, it's critical because it happens far more than you would expect it to.
It's sad.
It's extremely dangerous because once we're open and we're expecting people to stop, you know, the children are at risk. So that program has worked well. We're at about 70% of our buses now are camered. And we, you know, with this, we will be, I think we will be only a few off next year after this of being fully on our frontline buses, as far as going there.
And the following year, the rest will happen?
We're doing them as we're replacing them. It, from a cost point of view, it's about $2,500 a bus to fully outfit them. And, you know, again, it's helped us in a number of different times and a number of different, you know, reasons. Sometimes just even get clarity of what's going on with on the bus so that the principal can see exactly what the issues are and be able to have the right discussions with the students of their behavior and making sure that it's safe. Again, the scariest thing to us, and Amy and I have watched a few videos that if it wasn't so serious, it would be almost comical because it's so bad, of exactly what not to do on a bus. And again, the bus driver's driving. So they don't have that ability for somebody who's in the 77th passenger seat, you know, to say something to them type of thing. And they shouldn't because they hopefully are concentrating on the road. So another big-ticket item, it's an annual one. We have gone from two to three buses, depending on the year and depending on what we're trying to take off the road and the condition. Buses coming off the road, as you can see, you know, are close to 100,000 miles already. One's over 100,000 miles, the M3, which is one of the minis. And all three of these need to come off. Two of them, we've been told by the registry that this would be their last year anyway. So as far as they're concerned, so.
So we get roughly nine years for a bus?
Nine to 10 years and a little over 100,000 miles. And again, mostly all in town. So when you think about that, that's a lot of trips, a lot of places.
Or those going on filters. We add a little more miles that way.
Yeah, you know, if we're doing athletic trips or something like that, you know, you get there and, but.
Can I, I just want to ask, it does not show in this slide. I know the date and the page numbering are different than what we have in front of us. Is the only change just what's highlighted, or is it because I actually?
Yeah, there's only two changes. One, just to make it for smooth presentation. We added that slide at the very beginning that was part of the other budget. And then added the bold just to make it easier to, so nothing else has changed.
I was assuming that, I just wanted to, thank you.
The third item that's been an annual recurring item is the copiers within the district. Again, we run copiers for each school building and each school building has a backup copier to itself. So if you're on the smaller buildings like the liberal school, there'd be two copiers. It's not unusual for one to be down for, you know, technical and mechanical reasons. And obviously, if you only own the one, you'd be in a little bit of trouble trying to continue the process here. On the high school, we run actually some, a very large, high-speed one, which will get us about 3.5 million copies by the time that one is done. Helps us to reduce the smaller ones that we have around and it lasts, you know, twice as long. So again, we only replace a copier when it gets to the point that it has to be replaced. We, you know, we buy all of our copiers with a three-year service contract warranty in place. And that basically makes it so that we have no cost, other than the upfront cost for those three years, except for toner and, you know, supplies. And then after the third year, if the machine is good and we can make it a fourth and fifth year, we do. If it starts to become a serious cost factor, we have service contracts on anything that comes off a warranty. But obviously, the more they go down, the less, you know, likely we are to keep them just in the perspective of we need them within the operation and running. So we've been doing fairly well with the state contract bid list and typically able to replace four copiers a year. In the year that we replace the big one here, we can usually only replace three because it's that much more expensive, but it is, it's a very reliable machine. It's too big for any of the other schools, so that's why it's only sitting here at the high school from a perspective of number of copies we can do. This one, I'd like to ask Kami to come up and have a little bit more of a discussion with us on because I think this is a large enough item. Over the last, well, in, I went back for a little while here. So in 2008, the big band cost was a replacement of uniforms, which the town paid about $52,000, and we had a generous donor at the time that paid $50,000. In 2014, the school committee supported an article to replace the band keyboard system at the Ahern, which was about $38,000. And then in 2019, we had some smaller band instruments. And Meramo was one of them, I think that we didn't even own. We were borrowing somebody else's at the time. We, so FY '19, we did about $26,000. Most of the main equipment within the school music program is probably 20 to 25 years old.
Or even older.
Or older. So with that, Kami, why don't you kind of give a?
Sure. So basically, we need to replace our large items. And we're looking at replacing our entire string fleet at the Ahern in the middle school. So these are string basses, cellos, violins, violas. And these large instruments, we provide at the school because it's just not possible for the kids to transport them to and from, which they do with most of the smaller instruments. And those basically, they do have a shelf life on them. They just deteriorate over time, even though we do maintain them. But with storage conditions and just the nature of wood and instruments themselves, they do deteriorate along with, you know, little hands and bodies and banging and bumping. And, you know, it just happens. So, and we maintain, but over time, they just simply need to be replaced. I was actually looking at the pictures in the band room at the, I'm sorry, the orchestra room at the high school, and there's this yellow cello that is still in our fleet and was being used in the 90s. So just to give you sort of a clue that we're handing out 90-year-olds, you know, these 1990s textbooks, if you will, to the kids. And they just need to be replaced. And right now, the time that they're out for repair, the kids are without an instrument, so it's just not a best, great learning situation for them. We also need risers, which is a large item in there. It's about $18,000. We currently have one set of risers that supply the whole district. They do mostly go back and forth between the middle school and the high school. But the elementary schools do use them. And the choral program here at the high school is about twice as large as it was about four years ago. And we've actually outgrown the current risers that the middle school has. So it'd be great for us to have our own set here at the high school, and then the middle school can have their own set. And that would also reduce the wear and tear that happens when you transport them.
And we had our own set here, but it's in a condition now that is not safe. So we're not able to use those. The problem, anytime you start transporting these type of items, is that it's not even the wear and tear of them being used, it's that movement. And loading them onto trucks and unloading them onto trucks and stuff like that. They're not made for that. They're made to be able to be folded up and moved out of the way, but not to be moved in and out of buildings on a regular basis. And quite honestly, what we will end up doing if we don't make a move like this on the risers soon is we will just shorten the life on the other ones much faster. And so we'll end up having to replace those anyways. So this makes a lot of sense in the sense that you've got, you'll have two in the two areas that mainly use them. And then when the elementaries in their, you know, few times a year that they need to have, need to go, then, okay, we'll have a little bit of wear and tear from that perspective. But, but less than what we're looking at with just one set moving around.
What should be the life of risers?
It's all safety-based. It's just like anything else we look at. If we're looking at our elevators or, you know, anything that has a movement to it that, you know, you should be inspecting them. Perfect example, you know, over the last few years, we replaced all the staging material for graduation and for when we do those type of presentations. Because the old stuff was so bad that with all the Band-Aids we had put on it, we just couldn't make it to the point where we felt comfortable enough that putting people up on it, it was safe anymore. So it really is, it's how well you can maintain it. These are, the ones that we're talking about that are at the high school have been here for probably 20 years, if not more too.
They were here when I got here, so that's a long time.
So it's, it really is, if they were to sit in one place, opened up, and never be touched, they'd last a lot longer. But that's not the way our buildings work. Our buildings are constantly in motion. Areas are used different ways all the time. So these things are always picked up, moved out of the way, you know, rolled out of the way, brought back into the right place, rocking to another place. So we've, you know, again, I think what we're asking for here is something that basically is just to create a little bit of longevity of two items and a lot longer. Where, you know, my guess would be, if you had two of them, they'd both last 25 years. If you have one, they're probably going to last about 15, and you're going to be doing it again anyway. And you're not going to make yourself any better of a mode because you've just destroyed them by moving them.
I asked primarily because I was surprised that you were moving them.
Yeah, well.
And so that was my surprise. So my surprise is on the other direction, which is, why don't we have risers in all the places?
The elementary level, it probably, it doesn't make sense to be, first of all, we wouldn't have a place to store. So, you know, within the building, so that would be number one. But number two, you know, it would be expensive thing. Now, the other thing, and this was my recommendation to the music department, basically, was that this is not, this is a first year of a multi-year purchase. And I'm not saying you have to do it three years in a row, I'm not saying. But I wanted to be very clear, and that's why if you go back a slide here, the request for this year is the $75,000. But the total request just above that is for about $225,000 worth of equipment that you're going to go through and replace. And my opinion is, it's not practical to ask the town to do that in a one-swoop, well, spell swoop type thing. But it is, you know, if we can, like we've done everything else, whether it's been the athletic fields or whatever, if you can chunk it into pieces that the town can do without creating other issues, it's well worth it. If the town says that this is, you know, they have a higher priority, we have to at least put it out in front of them to let them know what the choice they're making is. And so that's, you know, quite honestly, why I asked Kami to put it together the way she did and to break it down the way it is. And I think that, you know, I think it makes sense, again, fiscally, if we can try to do it this way.
Kami, can I ask you a couple of questions? If we were to get pushback this year on the instruments versus the risers, would the risers be the top priority?
Yeah, if you asked me, I would say risers and string instruments are like
and?
An absolute, absolute must.
And what is, I understand that what?
And risers for safety, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, that's, when these have side rails, which I think is great.
They will get the rails.
Yeah, I think that's fantastic. And what is, I understand we have very old instruments that are over 30 years old. What is the expected life? So once we replace the instruments, you know, they're pretty expensive.
They are very expensive.
What is their expected lifespan? And I understand the wear and tear is unusual because they're in the hands of, you know, young students. But what would you expect the lifespan to be?
Honestly, I would say, I would say the string instruments are going to be in the 10 to 15-year mark. And then when you start looking at the brass instruments, our brass instruments, we can maintain for a really long time because it's just tubing. But then, so we could go 20, 30 years. The issue with our tubas now is that they literally don't even make the parts to fix them anymore. So I have to have someone.
They are over 25 years.
They might even be in the 30s, to be honest with you. Rich?
I know what they look like.
You might know what they look like.
I had that same Barry saxophone. I played something just like that 40 years ago.
So, you know, we have, it's about a $1,000 bill to fabricate a tube, to fix the tube. So, you know, we have, it's about a $1,000 bill to fabricate a tube, to fix the tuba, that's not even going to get it back into working condition.
Right, okay.
And then we look at our woodwind instruments, those are a little bit more finicky, because they have more pieces. So, depending on how well they're maintained, I'd say 15 to 25 years.
And what are we roughly paying to fix these instruments now?
Well, we have a very limited budget.
Yeah.
I think we're probably in the-
$10,000?
Yeah, I was going to say $10,000 to $15,000 on an annual basis, which means we don't have a lot of resources to really-
We're not fixing them properly, yeah.
You know, fix them beyond a certain point.
Joe, did you have a question?
Yes. Is there a priority, like, what's, like, prior, year one, year two, which, year three, which instruments will we replace in each year?
Well, we're only showing year one here.
That's year one.
So, this is strictly year one, year two and three is another part of the list.
But Ms. Tadoldi will give us priorities.
Right, yeah.
Like, this year's instruments, next year's, and the year after's.
Right, right. These are the highest priority of the instruments.
For this year.
Right, right.
That'll be brought to the town.
In total, out of the 225, this is the highest priority.
That's going to be brought to the town this March, right?
Okay.
Kami, some of these older, older ones that you have, are they in good enough condition so they could be kept in reserve tenderly, so that if one has to go out for repair, that there's like our extra little emergency bus, get a little bit more mileage out of it?
I mean, if it's shy of needing any work, it's not worth putting money into some of these at this point.
Right.
So, I mean, typically what we have done, but there's really no trade-in value to these at this point, you know, yes, would we try to keep something just in case, but the reality is, is it's, you're not, this is-
If they're this, if they're this old, it's time to say goodbye.
This list here is a primary list of primary problems, and-
Well, storage, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we run out of room quickly.
Right.
But some we do, like, we'll keep parts for-
Right.
For that purpose. And again, these are also instruments that we're supplying for students, because oftentimes these are secondary instruments. So, like a Barry sax, it is totally unreasonable for me to go out and ask a child to spend $6,000 on a Barry saxophone when that's going to be their second saxophone.
Right.
And same thing with the bassoon, those run around 12 grand. It's not reasonable for me to go out and say, would you play the bassoon, and go spend $12,000 on an instrument. So, it's very typical for school systems to maintain these larger, more expensive instruments for students to use.
Okay.
I think the other thing about choral risers, that they're definitely needed, but our program is vibrant and performs a great deal. So, the risers get set up and broken down far more than other schools. So, you asked the longevity of choral risers, I could talk to a music program that has three concerts a year.
And how many concerts a year do we have?
How many concerts a year do we-
Thirty.
Exactly. So, well, it's critically important, because that's the difference in our, in the string basses and the big instruments, which I know, because I played two of those, those you have to have. They're professional quality instruments, they will last, and they're well taken care by this music department and these kids, because they value that. But the drop-off to something else is extraordinary, and it's not even worth it.
If you think back, just to our elementary students and how well they took care of their ukuleles-
Oh, yeah.
When they came.
Yeah.
And you heard, the students are unbelievable in taking care of the instruments. And two, you have a very talented staff that is able to fix things-
We are.
Without sending some of the things out as well.
Like Jenny Greenleaf, as a part of her master's program, even did an independent study on instrument repair work. So, that, it does save us a little bit, it takes up a little more time, but, you know, it does show you that we are personally invested in maintaining these as well.
Well, thank you for putting together that list.
Thank you.
Do our best.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Kami.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you. Oh, Kami, before you leave, I was told during other matters, I did, I wanted to say again, that when, during the holiday concert, when you got interrupted during Beethoven's Fifth, that was such a moment, I've never seen anything like it.
Me neither.
And you and the students didn't miss a beat.
Thank you.
It was fantastic, the whole show was fantastic, beginning to end, but that was amazing to me. You stopped them and had them interrupted, and then right back, not a beat. It was great.
And I should give it a shout out to Foxborough People Access, because if you go and look at the footage, you would never know that that happened. They did this amazing-
Really?
Editing job. Wow, I haven't seen the footage.
Showed the students, I saw them this evening.
Oh, that's fantastic.
We had a rehearsal tonight, and I said, you all have to watch this. And they were like, but we stopped. No, you didn't.
There you go.
So, they did an amazing job, so.
I think it was the best monster ever. Thank you, thanks, Kami.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bill.
So, our total request is 558,500. I think you know the process, basically, is this goes to a separate committee. Obviously, we'll go to advisory committee as well, and the board of selectmen, but it goes to a separate committee who looks at the resources that are available for CIP in total, and then has the, you know, unenvious position of having to make decisions as to what things can make it within that budget level, and what things won't. So-
And that happens in March?
Well, Saturday morning in March.
Saturday in March.
How does this compare to last year's?
Yeah, we'll be, well, if you look at the other sheet that I gave you, it was $390,000 last year. It was actually supposed to be, it was going to be higher with the Borough School Sewer Project, but the Sewer Department actually was able to do that work for us. So, it was going to be, I believe, 425,000.
So, it's a little higher this year?
Yeah, it's a little higher, it's, you know, but again, I think the-
Well, last year you didn't have many.
Yeah.
Last year we only had two buses.
It's a third bus, it's a third, it's a big difference, it's the third bus, that's a huge difference.
The bus and the music equipment.
Yeah.
That's the difference.
To the point that was brought up earlier, I think, and given what we've seen, some of the discussions with CIP in recent years, prioritizing the list, they think is important. Beyond, I mean, she's already done a ton of work to prioritize the list. And stretch it out over three years.
Agreed.
I think it's important, actually, that you know, the music department, not including uniforms, is responsible for probably about $400,000 worth of equipment. And as I said, when I noted those few changes for, over the last 12 years, there's been very little that's been in music equipment. It's mostly been in, you know, other things, whether it's uniforms or whatever. So, there's, you know, the town has a big investment in it, we obviously have a program that people are very proud of, but there's obviously a cost, as she said, that you can't expect the regular person to be able to do on their own, so.
They take excellent care of those uniforms, too, by the way, just as an add.
And they're beautiful.
They're beautiful, but the kids take excellent care of those uniforms. And they have students that are in charge of making sure the uniforms are all properly accounted for, and everybody gets everything back, and it's pretty amazing. So, all right. Very good, thank you for the CIP presentation. Anything else before we move on? Okay. Acceptance of donation, always a good part of our meetings.
So, with Meditech moving to Foxborough and opening up an office, that provided us the opportunity to benefit on the educational side, and they donate $10,000, and this is the second donation, and then we go and we present to their board what we're using those funds for.
Right.
And so, it was Project Lead the Way for this year, and so Allison has talked about that at some of our prior meetings. But it is with great gratitude-
Yes.
-to be able to receive this, because we were talking about funding sources before. This is a huge funding source to go towards that, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit more.
Yeah, so we're hoping to move this into grade six. We're having our visit that was canceled to Sandwich is actually next week. And we're bringing along Mrs. Grant, she's a technology teacher for sixth-grade students, so that she can get a preview of what the program is, and then we'll start working on what the investment is. So, this will come in handy.
So, this is a $10,000 donation?
Yes.
Have we, have we ever invited them to, so?
We have, but they haven't come yet. We have actually been out to their facility a number of times, and each year, we go and report on how the money has been invested in our program. And they actually hosted the math competition earlier this year, and we were out there for that as well. But they say they would like to come.
We've taken teachers with us that are, that are actually using, whether it was the probes, the Vernier probes from before, are then using as far as Project Lead the Way.
Thank you for that, because that was the first thing I thought of, like, we're at a great donation, we should make sure we engage them, I wasn't assuming we didn't, so I'm glad you-
No, and I hope that they are able to find the time to actually come out, I think they'd be really impressed.
It'd be great to have them come to class, right? See the kids doing it, that's what I was thinking.
I can say that they were very happy to hear of how we were using the funds the last two years when we've gone to present before their board.
Yes.
They said that our, they haven't heard of the things that we've been using the monies for from other districts, so.
That was a good one.
That's almost discourteous. Truly. I wouldn't, I'd give more to Foxborough. The others who don't even say thank you.
We're not saying they don't say thank you.
No, 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 no. We're doing our thing good.
Yes. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept this donation?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the $10,000 donation for Meditech with gratitude.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you. Rob, any further discussion? All those in favor, 500. Much gratitude, thank you, Meditech.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to other matters. Amy, would you like to start?
Sure. So, we have our groundbreaking on Thursday at 11 o'clock AM at the Borough School. Bill, as far as the confirmation from MSBA, we have the confirmation from them.
Jack McCarthy will be there.
And then also, we have Paul Feeny that will be there, and then Jay Barrows will be there as well, and others from the school building committee.
I will be there.
And we'll have students who are going to be representative of each of the classrooms at the school out for the groundbreaking, too. So, it should be a great event.
Looking forward to it.
And just as a quick update on that, the Borough School, basically, we're at the point where foundations are almost complete. So, we're, we've gotten to the point where we were nervous because of weather changes. We're pretty close on-
Foundations for the new classrooms in the preschool area?
And the gym.
And the gym.
Yeah.
That's great.
We'll be able to see that.
Be able to see that.
All right. Sounds good.
It'll be out of the ground, but not out of the ground, if you know what I mean.
Excellent, thank you for the update on that.
Kindergarten registration starts tomorrow, all my parents, the rest of the week, kindergarten registration, which is so important. Come soon and register. As you know from enrollment, it's important. The other thing that I wanted to mention was part of our Plan for Success, which is the new name for our strategic plan. Moving forward, we have a 27-member team that starts January 15th. That's just the first, there will be many opportunities to bring voices in later, but that kicks off on January 15th, and with a visioning exercise, so we're really looking forward to that particular process starting. And then at some point, I think that it will be a good topic for school committee to talk about having a, maybe a workshop meeting, that will also be able to bring other voices and thoughts and ideas to the process.
Sounds good.
To.
I saw in our informational items, the Director of Student Services search timeline.
Yes.
Do you need school committee representatives for that?
Yes, thank you.
And should we get on that, because it's moving forward?
Yes, Allison will be leading that search, so why don't?
I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
No, you didn't. That's actually not what I was going to talk about.
Okay.
So, that's great. So, yes, we have, I believe the email has gone out to parents and teachers and staff. So, yes, we would, we will have school committee representation. So, usually do that here at the meeting?
Yes, we do. Typically, take volunteers, if anyone is interested in participating in the-
We had two members last time when I ran the search.
Yes, actually, it was Steve, Steve Juden and myself, and it was very, very instructive when we hired Sandra Einzel.
And Tina and Marilyn were both on the search for Ms. Frazier, for the Ahern principal.
You don't have to have two of you, we just had two the last time, but I do think it's a really important voice to have.
So, the timeline is included.
Yes, it's in your, it's in your additional information. So, we will be starting with our initial screening Tuesday, January 21st. That's more of an organizational meeting, ground rules, going over the process. People at that time will get their packet of applicants to go home and screen. We come back, on the 28th, we do the screening. We have a whole process that we go through that's very formulaic, I would say, that we follow for all of our searches. It's very, been very successful in the past. And then we have our interviews scheduled tentatively for February 4th and 6th, and if needed, on February 11th, depending on how many candidates we push forward to the interview rounds. And then our semifinalists will be put forward to the superintendent on February 12th, and we are hoping to have our final candidate to the school committee for the March 16th date.
It's the timing of day.
It's in the evening.
Yes, in the evening. They're all in the evenings, yes.
Thank you, Brett. So, Brett has volunteered? That's fantastic. Is there anybody else who is interested in participating?
So, I'm sorry, can you say they get, so the interviews are mostly the evenings?
The two first informational meetings are 6 to 8, and then the interviews, sometimes they're 5 to 8, sometimes they're 4 to 7, it depends on when candidates are available, but we can be flexible. We usually decide as a committee what everyone's availability is, before we set up the interviews.
We've typically not started interviews before 5, unless it's that extra, we've added that extra evening.
Yeah, I can't remember starting before 5.
I'm happy to participate, unless you are compelled.
I was willing to, but you're, you have the time and you're happy to, so.
I do have the time, yeah.
Okay. That would be great. I think you both find it very, very instructive on how we hire and the thorough process, really, truly. So, thank you both for volunteering. Much appreciated, and look forward to it.
And that's, that's your appointment? So, when we have the candidate come forward on March 16th, I'll be recommending a candidate to you, but it is your candidate to appoint.
Right, that's right. So, well, thank you, Brett, and thank you, Rob. That's great, appreciate the volunteering for that, very much. Allison, what did you have?
I have two things. One, I know as a teaching and learning highlight, you heard the students come from the medical detectors, Project Lead the Way. That was scheduled to end with the semester in January, but because it has been such a popular offering, we, and it wasn't actually planned for in our budget, but we figured out how, through our donations, we're going to actually run it again for a different cohort of students in the spring.
Oh, nice, that's great.
The teachers were instrumental in advocating for it because they are loving it.
It doesn't surprise me knowing, knowing the two teachers. Yes.
Yeah. So we're really proud of that and excited about that. We also have a very robust professional development day coming up on the Martin Luther King, the Friday of that week. And it's being run for the first time exactly like our summer institute with online signups. And it's called Choose Your Own Adventure, so the teachers have choice. We do have, one must-do that they're doing is a Stop the Bleed offering from the-
Foxborough Fire Department.
Foxborough Fire Department. So all of our classroom teachers will have that training. And then for the rest of the day, they'll have some choices ranging from technology, social-emotional, special ed, self-care. They're very excited and we are very excited about it. PD committee, shout out to them.
Friday of-
Martin Luther King Week. I think that's the 24th, 18th. I don't, I lose track of dates. 24th.
24th.
The kids, the students will have a three-day week.
They will.
That's when we have-
Remember, we discussed that with calendar a year ago?
Right, right, right.
Yes.
That's good.
So we're all looking forward to that. That's it for me.
Thank you. Brent, do you have anything?
I do not.
Richard?
I do not. Thank you.
Rob?
I do not.
Dana?
What's up?
Debbie?
A happy, healthy, productive New Year to all. And I would just like to mention that I had the privilege of attending the memorial service for Ann McGreen. And Ann McGreen was a, a name you will remember, Rich. She had been a science teacher and a long, long-term guidance counselor at the Ahern School. And she passed away on the 26th. And I saw people like Mr. Charlie Crowley and Mrs. Carol Hoyle. So Rich is, Rich is the only one who will remember. But so I started my teaching career at the Ahern. So I, it was good. It was good. Thank heavens for weddings and funerals or people would not get together.
Okay. I just wanted to add that our students are going to be inducted in the National Honor Society here at the high school next Wednesday, the 15th. So congratulations in advance.
At what time?
I think it's 6:30.
6:30.
Congratulations in advance to those students. And I think that's it for me. There's so much going on.
We do have a concert tomorrow with fifth grade. We have District Festival this weekend that's coming up, too.
Oh, very exciting.